Council Bluff Savings Bank. Our goal is to help you, your families, and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluff's people operating at Council Bluff's bank to help Council Bluff's be a better place to work and live. Council Bluff Savings Bank. Hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
Appreciate his willingness to serve the community. Thank you. Thank you. It's a very minimal agenda today, and so let's just go right to the agenda. We don't have any additional stuff. Are there any questions, concerns, or comments in regards to the consent agenda?
Can I ask, are you going to have the auditor speak first?
Oh, did you want to do that? Or how do you want to?
Yeah.
All right. That'll get it back. Thank you. I've asked two auditors from the Auditor of State's office to come and address the council today. My rationale is that with a new mayor and a new council member, it's important to understand the relationship that a client has with its auditor, explain why we've chosen the Auditor of State, and that they'll talk and answer your questions on the comprehensive annual financial report. They express an opinion on it. They audit our activity for compliance and gives an opportunity for you as policy centers for the city to speak with the people who are making sure that the executive branch and the administration is doing what they should be doing. Marlis Gaston and Andy Nielsen are members of the Auditor of State's office. Marlis has worked on this job for longer than I've been here, so at least five years. Andy is Deputy Chief Auditor who reviews our audit each year. They're the people that stand behind what we've prepared and what gets into that report. And I'd like to ask them to come up and be available for any questions that you might have and for them to explain a little bit about what they do each year when they come up.
Thank you, Art. As Art said, my name's Andy Nielsen. I'm a Deputy Auditor of State, kind of the State Auditor's Office for a long time. I do really appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you today and to talk a little bit about what we do. I'd also like to introduce Marlis Gaston as the manager of our office. She headed up our team that performed the audit this year. An audit basically comes in and looks at your financial statements and your financial processes. It takes a really good, hard look at your internal control, the internal controls that you have established over the assets and the operations of the city. I'm pleased to announce that we do not have a lot of findings. Marlis will be going through some of those detail findings that we do have in just a little bit. Marlis is going to take you through the financial statements, so I'm going to start just a little bit. If you would turn to pages nine and 10 and 11 with me. It's kind of appropriate for us to be here this year because the Accounting Standards Board that establishes auditing standards for the nation redid some things this year. They had a project that was called the Clarified Auditing Standards Project. And what that has done is gone through and taken a look at some of the things that auditors have done in the past. If you turn with me to page nine, there's a bunch of new headings on the report. If you look at the first heading, it says "Report on Financial Statements." That tells you what we've audited. The second paragraph deals with what management's responsibilities are. Management's responsible for preparing those financials, making sure that they're fairly presented. There's a couple paragraphs, or three paragraphs, talking about the auditor's responsibilities. It talks about that we audit. We audit on a risk basis. We look at internal control, but we do not give an opinion on internal control. And then we're required to, in the last paragraph on page nine, we're required to tell you that we believe the audit evidence that we've put together supports our opinion. And we believe, in this particular case, it certainly does. The top of page 10 are our opinions on the financial statements. And with the amendment of GASP 34 a few years ago, there are, each set of governmental financial statements has a number of different opinion units, and we're required to give an opinion on each opinion unit. So you can see the opinion units in your particular city are governmental activities, the business type activities, aggregate discreetly presented component units, each major fund and the aggregate remaining. And don't ask me to say that again. It's kind of a mouthful, but so there are five opinion units in your particular city. And we gave an unmodified opinion on each one of those opinion units this year. And I want to take this time for some of you that remember, audit opinions used to either be qualified or unqualified. Well, this is the first year that it's changed to modified or unmodified. And your opinions on your financial statements are unmodified, which means, and that's as good as it gets. It's as good as that's available. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Marlis for a few minutes to kind of walk you through the MDNA and a few other things on the financial statements that will be available for questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Okay. The good news is we're not going to cover all 151 pages in the report today, but bear with me a little bit. We're going to start on page 12, if you would turn there with me. Pages 12 through 21 of the report are what's called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And this is a document that's written by the city, by Art and his finance team, and it's really, it's an excellent overview or summary of what happened during the year in your city. It's meant to be an easy-to-read, something that you folks and the citizens can pick up if you want to just get a quick picture of your financial activity for the year, and it gives some analysis to the prior year. So this is kind of what I'm going to walk through, to walk through the financial information. And then when I'm through this, we'll go to the back of the report and we'll cover, as Andy said, the audit findings that are in the report for the year. So starting on page 12, just to give you a little bit of background, your financial statements are really reported under two different perspectives. There's a government-wide perspective, which is your governmental activities and your business type activities that Andy mentioned. And then there's your fund perspective. The government-wide perspective is looking at your city more as a whole. So it's taking and combining for governmental activities, all of your governmental funds, like your general and debt service and road use tax and those, so that you can see the big picture as a whole, what those look like. And it also is a longer-term view, so what we'll see when we're looking at the financial information is that you'll see your long-term assets, your infrastructure, your streets, your buildings, pulled into those numbers, as well as any long-term liabilities that you have against, that you've issued to pay for those assets. The fund financial statements, which we'll touch on a little bit, are a little different perspective. They're a shorter-term view. It's a look at your major funds, the most important ones, like general, and the focus is on the flow of financial resources, what you have really more readily available to spend and operate with day-to-day. Okay, so starting with the government-wide, on page 13, you'll see that there's a table there. And what that is, is it's in what we used to call a balance sheet, we now call a statement of net position. And you'll see that your governmental activities are split from your business type. And it just gives you a picture on a specific day, June 30, what your governmental activities and business-type activities looked like. So you can see that the largest part of your assets, obviously, is your capital assets. And you can see that your long-term liabilities pulled in there. Some of the takeaways from this, overall, when you look overall, your financial position in total didn't change a lot. It changed less than 1% in total. The breakdown of that, your net position is really broken down into, we look at three different areas. The first is what you have invested in your capital assets, and netted against that is the debt, the obligations that you have issued to pay for those assets. That's that first number. And the largest, always the largest number in your net position. The restricted is, that represents resources that have external restrictions on their use. So your debt service levy, your lost TIF dollars, those balances in those, of those funds fall under restricted. Now, your restricted decreased about 16%. You can see from the prior year, it went down about $5 million or so. That's really primarily because at the end of June 3012, you folks had issued some debt to do some refunding in fiscal 13. So at June 30, 2012, you were still holding those restricted dollars that were then used in fiscal 13 to repay the debt for which they were issued. That's probably the biggest reason for that change. And then the unrestricted net position is what's left, what you have to use to finance your day-to-day activities. And overall, again, that piece of it increased overall pretty significantly. The breakdown of that, you can see for governmental activities, it didn't change a lot. It is at a deficit for your governmental activities, and you can see for business type, it's a positive number. That deficit, what that really means is, for the most part, you issue a lot of your general obligation bonds, and portions of those are used to pay for assets that are capitalized in the sewer or the business type. So you have the asset in one column and the debt in a different column. So that's really what drives a deficit in your governmental activities there. But your business-type activities are doing well, and that's primarily increased because of capital contributions from developers and things. So that's pretty much your net position. If you turn to the next page, this is sort of your operating statement. That was the balance sheet. This is more like your operating statement for your business-type activities. And some of the differences there, you can kind of see from last year to this year, your charges for services went up. That's primarily one of the things the city decided this year for your Mid-America Center. It's always been reported at sort of a net number, and we decided with your city finance department that should really be grossed up, and we included that in the audit this year. So that's where that increases. Your operating grants should make sense to you that that went down by about half. Last year's amount represented FEMA. Do you remember from the June of '12 flood, a large portion of that was FEMA dollars used to sort of work on your levies and things right away. And your capital grants also went down pretty significantly, and that was partly Iowa West dollars decreasing, as well as you had some federal programs for some of your street projects that you didn't have in fiscal 13. And those same things would be impacting your expenses overall in those areas. The next couple pages, and I'm not going to cover these, but there's some graphs, if you're interested. It kind of shows you where your revenues come from and how much of the pie your taxes are versus other types of revenues. And the same with page 16 in terms of your expenses, which functions, get how much of the expenditures from your city. And remember, this is city as a whole. This is entity-wide. So you know, how much of your public safety and public works and general government, where those dollars go. Page 17, I just briefly will mention what that means. That table on the bottom half of the page, that shows you for each function, how much of those expenses in those functions were covered by general revenue, so tax dollars, gaming dollars, hotel motel dollars. So after you take out grants that you receive and what users of your programs pay to cover those, this is net what your dollars, your tax dollars are needing to cover by function. Okay. Page 18 starts the discussion of your, the fund financial perspective. And this focus, the city has a lot of funds, but the focus here and in your financial statements is on your major funds, the most important ones. So just briefly covering that with you, the general fund, you can see there that the balance in your general fund decreased just under 7%. Probably the biggest reason for that, from last year to this year, were some transfers that you made from general to capital projects to cover some project costs and equipment costs that were intended to be covered with the general fund from gaming and hotel taxes, which is where those dollars lie. Revenues and expenditures declined from fiscal 12 really pretty consistently, and a lot of that had to do with the FEMA expenditures and revenues. Your Bass Pro Shop Fund, which is a special revenue fund, you can see the balance declined there as well, just under 12%. Your revenues went down about 14% and expenditures decreased somewhat less than that. And that primarily is just less support from Iowa West Foundation. That's primarily what impacts that fund. Your Tax Increment Financing Fund, your balance increased in that fund, actually from about $25,000 up to about $360,000. And that's really driven by your valuations in the property and where the increments, because you generate dollars in that fund from the incremental value from the development in your TIF areas. And so as that grows, what's generated for TIF dollars off those valuations would increase. And then that's used to pay obligations that you've issued to fund those projects, as well as provide grants and things.
That had been a timing issue? Was the audit done at the same time last year, and that some of those TIF dollars would have been paid out?
Part of it could be timing, but part of it, the biggest part is just how much is generated. The city also, you know, you can, each year you have the option to opt whether you want to collect everything that's generated off your TIF, or whether you want to cut that back and only collect what you know your debt payments are for the year. So some of it could be that, and Art or Andy could speak a little bit more to that maybe too, but...
I think a large part of this is timing of the debt payments.
Okay. Okay, your Local Option Sales Tax Fund, that balance increased as well, about 16% over the year, and that's really just due to increased sales tax revenue. And you also had a reduction in some capital project costs that you paid from that fund, from your lost dollars. The Debt Service Fund balance decreased about $0.2 million, and that goes back to last year, you were holding proceeds, and this year you used it to refund some debt. And then your Capital Project Fund balance increased for a couple reasons. You made some transfers. It wasn't a deficit at June 30, 2012, about $6 million. You made some transfers from general and lost to help cover some of the things that you intended to cover for projects. And then you also issued some additional bonds during fiscal 13, not all of which obviously was spent by June 30. Your proprietary funds, your sewer and refuse funds, your activity in those stayed fairly constant for the year. Not a huge, both of them increased a little bit, but not a huge increase. And we'll talk about your sewer fund a little bit when we get back to the audit findings. The rest of this is just, talks about your budgetary highlights and the budget amendment, the one budget amendment that was done during the year and the purposes for that, something that you folks can certainly read. It also, page 20 goes a little bit into the capital asset activity for the year and sort of what projects you spent your money on during the year and what equipment, as well as your long-term debt, which we've talked about some of the different things that happen with your long-term debt. Okay, I will take you now back to page 147, and we'll briefly go through the findings, and then we'll turn it over to cover what questions that you might have. The first couple pages, 147 and 148, are what we call the Internal Control Findings. And the theme here is really controls or accountability more for things. Some of these are repeats, some things are new findings, and I'll just briefly cover them. All of the, we do ask that the city respond to these findings, and we do put that response right in your report. And all the responses were favorable for implementing procedures to take care of the issues. First of all, on financial reporting, this was just an issue during the audit. We found that when you issued your $14 million in debt, there was a premium with it, as well as some issue costs, and those needed to be reported a little differently in the financials than they were. So that's really, we recommend procedures be implemented to ensure that those are reported properly, and you've responded that you would do that properly in the future. The second item has to do with receipts, and this really deals with, you know, having that segregation of duties between bringing dollars in, collecting them, recording them, and then an independent review of what got into the records. And so that's what this has to do with, is an initial listing of receipts that's made by an independent individual, which is a very strong control, but only if that independent individual takes that list later and traces it into the records to make sure that it got properly posted and deposited. So we're just asking that procedures be established to ensure that that be done by an independent person and that that be documented, that that person perform that independent review. Item C is repeated from the last year or so, and that just deals with, you know, you've got a good policy, purchasing policy for the goods that you purchase, but we're just, you know, our audit covers a lot of areas, and we look at policies too. And we would recommend that you have a policy for covering your purchase of services as well as, you know, you purchase a lot of services as city government. We would just recommend your policies address those too. Item D on page 148 deals with journal entries and transfers, and this again goes back to We want someone independent looking at the journal entries and tracing them and making sure that they're okay. And I think that that's done, but what was lacking was just the documentation. And as auditors, if it's not documented, then we have to say it's not being done. So we have to see that documentation. And then lastly, for internal control, deals with the Mid-America Center, that part of our audit, we did find that they have a catchover short account that they use when they don't correct, collect the correct amount from a guest or a customer. And we've just recommended procedures to ensure that the correct amounts are collected and accounted for, and if not, that those experiences be resolved and determined. So again, favorable responses for those. The next page is where we would report findings, if we had any, on our audit of your federal programs. And basically, we didn't have findings to report. We do a pretty in-depth audit of what's considered your major federal programs and didn't have any findings with those. So on to page 150 and 151. These are what we call our statutory findings, the things that some were in the code or some statute or your policies, where we may have found some noncompliance. The one thing I'll note here is, we report, for some things, we report whether we found noncompliance or not. So for item B, for example, where it talks about questionable expenditures, we say that no expenditures that we believe may not meet the requirements of public purpose were noted. We do that, if we'd have found noncompliance, we would have reported it. But there's certain things that we want to tell you and the public that we looked at, and we either found it was okay or not, and these are pretty standard things. So I won't go through those, but there were two items of noncompliance. The first one, item A, had to do with your budget. And as you know, you set a budget every year, and you set that by function, and you're required to keep your expenditures within function. And there were three functions where the expenditures were exceeded, and that's explained in the response, what happened, and also an indication that your budget would be amended in the future before it's exceeded. So we've accepted that response. And then the last item, I mentioned, I talked about your sewer fund a little bit. Your revenue notes, for the first time in a long time, in the last couple years, you have issued some revenue bonds versus just sticking with GO bonds. The revenue bond resolutions for the sewer requires that you set rates for the services in the system that would produce net revenues equal to at least 110% of what your principal and interest payments are each year. And actually, for fiscal 13, your sewer fund was at a net operating loss of about $154,000. So got a little bit of work to do there to determine how you're going to bump those up, and your response indicates that you're looking at ways to do that to come into compliance. That's really all I have, so I think we can open it up for questions that you might have.
I have one question. And thank you for giving us something that was easy to read. I'm not a financial statement person, but at least this was easy for me to read. I had a couple questions, but unfortunately, I left my personal book on my kitchen table. The only one I remember was the cost breakdown of the different functions, like general government, public safety, et cetera, et cetera, in that pie chart. And I noticed that the largest percentage is, of course, public safety. And then the second largest was the government, general government. So I'm assuming the general government is the running of the government salaries, et cetera, et cetera?
It is. And that's back on page 16, I think, that chart that you're talking about.
Right, so my question on that is, in the general government versus the public safety, are the salaries and benefits in the general total piece of the pie, or is it in the public safety piece of pie?
Well, I may let Art answer that.
Salaries and wages are in the functional areas, no matter what. So police, fire, animal control, those wages are all in public safety. General government would be mayor, council, city attorney, that sort of...
Treasurer, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, thank you.
And the other thing in that general government for the fiscal year, it's actually, the percentage is a little higher than your typical. I looked back two, three years ago, and it was more at like 15%, but with FEMA, a lot of your FEMA expenses ran through general government. So for last year and this year, that percentage was bumped up a little bit.
Which would include additional consulting.
And the property acquisition cost that took place in this fiscal year. There was about $2 million in that sense. So there were a few one-time expenses in fiscal 13 still related to the flooding incident.
Alan, did you have a question?
Yes. If we could return briefly to the subject of TIFs. Reading over the report, I noticed a precipitous increase in TIF revenues. And then I sat down with Art, and we had a discussion about expenditures in the area of community development. And then I started asking about specific expenses versus revenues and how things were reflected in the budget. And sometimes things were placed in areas where it was difficult for me, a poli sci major, I'm not a finance guy either. It was difficult for me to judge whether or not we were getting the full bang for the buck out of community development dollars. I have no doubt that we are. Is that, are there ways that we, procedures that that might be looked at that would help better evaluate dollars in the area of community development?
I think one of the, TIF is an area that the legislature has shined some light on over the last couple years, and probably the best way to get a handle on TIF is to go out and look at the report online. It goes through pretty much, it gives you by district, the resources that are being collected and the types of debt that's there. So I think that's probably a really good summary. If you have questions after you've done that, feel free to give me a call. I'd be happy to walk through a little bit more with that. TIF is an area that, and I don't have the, you know, I think it's probably in here. I looked at it very briefly, wanted to listen to your questions instead of not listening to your questions. So the city has a lot of TIF debt, so that a little bit of a difference between revenues and expenses in a particular year are due to the timing or when debt can be called. Sometimes you, for example, you may go out and issue a 10-year bond. I'm not saying that you did, but you could do that. A $100,000 bond, $10,000 due each year. And you can only pay $10,000 each year. You can't pay it in advance. So you might be collecting some money that's going to be paid in a couple years on that. But typically, you have other debt that that money can be used for, but the timing of that might be a little bit different. So that's one of the pieces that are into it. And the beautiful part of the report that's on the web, that's on a website available for your city, is you can take a look at that, and you can see the debt that's associated with the different projects, and you kind of see what's going on with that. with the different projects and you kind of see what's going on with it. There's a lot of information there. But as I said, take a look at that and see if that helps a little bit. It is an area that I think that Council of Losses has used a lot of TIF, but they've used it very well in a lot of different areas. And I think that you've released a lot of money, oh, excuse me, you've released a lot of, the city has released a lot of valuation for general taxes as well, which is a good sign. So there's a balance there. I've been told by bond attorneys many times that a lot of good things in the state wouldn't happen without TIF. That's, I think that there's, you know, all things with moderation so here, but I don't see, as we looked at it, I didn't see anything that stuck out as being over the line.
Yeah, and I was not suggesting that there was a problem or an issue. And I'll take your suggestion to get online and do some homework and if I have any questions, I'll get back with Art before I pass through your office. I just want to make sure that we are setting this out in a fairly straightforward fashion so the general public can understand what sort of return we're getting on the dollar.
And information's there, you know, the web, it goes back to the maps and plan and, you know, the real plan and the whole works, so I think it's there. I had a couple, while you're thinking of additional questions, I have two more real quick things I want to mention to you. First, there's a couple of new GASB statements that are, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board is the board that is charged with the responsibility for establishing new governmental accounting standards. They've issued two statements that are going to be effective. One's effective next year, so that would be the June 30th, 2014, that's GASB Statement Number 65. It's going to change your financial statements a little bit. For those of us that think we've got accounting mastered, we know the equation, assets minus liabilities equal net assets or net position. Next year, it changes. Next year, we're going to have five pieces. We're going to have assets, we're going to have something like assets, it's called deferred outflows of resources, or then we're going to have liabilities, and then we're going to have something that's kind of like liabilities, but not quite, it's called deferred inflows of resources, and then we're going to have net position. Those deferred inflows and outflows aren't going to affect you a lot. The biggest thing that's going to go into the deferred inflows is the unavailable property tax that you record in the financial statements that's related for next year. And that's all cities and counties and school districts in the state of Iowa are the same. You'll see that in financial statements. That's kind of a fairly minor, it's going to be. I just wanted to tell you, so if you start seeing some deferred inflows and outflows, you think, what in the world are these? I just broached the subject, that's probably enough for today. The second piece is GASB 68, and that deals with some pension reform. Basically, in fiscal year, the fiscal year that ends June 30, 2015, the city council of loss will record its proportioned share of the liability for IPRSS and for the Iowa municipal fire and police department. That's something that's coming down the pipe. IPRSS is actually going to prepare a lot of the information, the proportionate share of that, and I'm sure that the municipal fire and police will also. I just, I brought over, I've been working with some materials for training, I've been trying to help IPRSS train, do some training on this, been putting together a piece of the footnote disclosure that will be included in reports starting in '15. I gave Art a copy of that today, hopefully. He didn't pass out when I handed it to him, so that was a good sign. But it's about seven pages long, so there's some information there. But I think it'll be, it's one of those things, it's a thing that's going to be good to help explain to the citizens, you know, how this is working and what's going to happen with it. So those two things. The other thing I want to do is I want to congratulate the city finance staff. This is the third year that the city has prepared a CAFER. The CAFERS for 2011 and 2012 were submitted to GFOA for their certificate program and did receive the certificate of achievement, which was a feather in your hat. This report, we believe this report also qualifies, it's been submitted to GFOA as well, so that's a really big step forward and I think you can be proud of your finance staff for getting you to this point. With that, any other questions for today?
Just kind of a procedural, huh? What percentage of Iowa cities get audited by the state auditor? What percentage use private auditor? Do the larger cities tend to use the state auditor or private auditor?
It's all over the board. We do, I'll start out with local governments, we don't do very many school districts at all, we do about half of the counties in the state. For those cities that are audited, now, if you remember, before July 1st of 2013, there were really three types of situations. Cities over 2,000 got an audit every year, cities between the population of 700 and 2,000 got an audit once every four years, and cities under 700 only got an audit if they, if the city council wanted one, if the citizens petitioned for one, or the city received and expended more than $500,000 of federal funds in a given year. Well, there are about 600 cities that are in that category, so they don't get audited. Of those cities that were audited before, we probably did somewhere in vicinity of 30 to 40% of the audits. We do a representative share of audits over the years. Our portfolio, if you want to call it client list, varies from year to year. We do some large, we do some small, we do some, you know, counties, we do, you know, all over the place as well. So we do not do many schools, we do a community college, we do all three state universities and, you know, that's pretty much our practice. A lot of landfills, you might say, why do you do a lot of landfills? Because landfills have a lot of cash. And it's very important that they have good internal controls or that cash disappears. So does that kind of give you a little bit of flavor? Or, you know, that answered your question a little bit? Okay, other questions?
Couple more. I'll try and be brief. Regarding property tax reform, our friends in the legislature have repeatedly promised that there will be a backfill of lost revenues. And we all know how promises go. I noticed that the Iowa city, their city manager has just made a recommendation that they set aside an emergency fund or set aside fund, allowing for the possibility that that backfill does not take place. Understanding that their levy and spending rate is somewhat greater than it is here, do you have an opinion, and I understand that you work for an elected official, so if you elect not to answer, I completely understand, but do you have an opinion as to that sort of accounting decision by city? Do you think that might be prudent, in your term?
The state does, the state does have a rainy day fund. It actually has two components of a rainy day fund, I think there's 7.5% of the typical expenditures of loan fund and 2.5% another. So total between the two, they have about a 10% rainy day fund. And that piece has helped the state keep its, you know, keep its promises. Has the state always kept its promises? No. Sadly, I can't stand here and say, yes, they always keep their promises. But hopefully, they will in this, you know, in this situation with the agreement that was made last year, the bill was passed last year. Beyond that, I really, even if I wanted to, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball. My crystal ball doesn't work any better than yours.
No, I would say, ask a question of good accounting practices, would that be a prudent step to?
I think there's a number of different ways to do that. One of the things, if you look at pages 32 and 33 of your report, you do have a fairly decent fund balance in your general fund, which is your, you know, your primary, you know, property tax driven fund. If you look at the fund balance, you have an unassigned fund balance of about $15 million. Your expenditures were $56 million for the year, so you have, you know, pretty close to, you know, a little bit more than 25% fund balance. So if you look at that, part of that is for cash flow, part of that is for, you know, unanticipated revenue modifications in the future. So you're kind of, you know, you're kind of doing that already. Cities kind of do that already a little bit. GASB, you know, if the city is interested in looking at a true stabilization fund or a rainy day fund, there are some specific requirements in GASB Statement Number 54 that was effective a couple of years ago that you really need to look at. That's GASB Statement 54. I can't tell you the paragraphs that deal with the stabilization fund, but that's what it's called. There are some hoops to jump through. If you really want to have a stabilization fund, then you really need to set it aside and the council needs to commit that for stabilization. And what that means is if you, then if you commit that, it can't be spent for anything other than that unless you go through the same process to uncommit an expense. So, yeah, so it's, you know, it's kind of locked down a little bit, so that's something that you want to look at. Some cities really don't want to do that because they don't want to lock themselves into it. You've chosen thus far not to do that, you have some flexibility there, but you haven't locked yourself into it. And from a personal standpoint, I think that, you know, in some ways makes a lot more sense.
Interesting, in a lot of past legislative attempts, the state government has built in language to require our cities to spend down the rainy day fund, which is ludicrous at best.
You've got to have some. You know, the simple manner is you need to have a cushion there because, you know...
We've all have suffered tremendously at the hands of the flood, have you not?
Yeah. You've got to have some available and whenever you have a building, you have heating systems, you have roofs, you have, you've got to have some funds there. You don't want to be borrowing all the time, you have to be able to take care of some of those things. It's just like our personal lives, you know, you want to have a rainy day fund with your own personal stuff too, because you have furnace, you know, I have a friend that his furnace went out this summer, this winter, I had a friend that air conditioner went out this summer. You have to plan ahead for some of those types of things. But you also have to have the fiscal discipline, which I think you've got, to be able to, you know, have some money there and not spend it. That's the key. You've got to have a plan and stick to that plan. Any other questions? Just a very simple one, this is more of a demographics question. I noticed that among the top 10 employers in the city, you only have one that qualifies as a manufacturing or industrial employer. In your area of expertise, having looked at the other cities, how do we rank with some of the other cities of similar size?
You know, I'd say over the last 25 years, you're not any different than any other, you know, major city. A lot of our manufacturing is not, you know, manufacturing's not our big base anymore. It's decreased a little bit from what it was 25 years ago. So you're not a lot different than any others. There are a lot of the other service industries have really taken the place of some of those. Farm economy is fairly well too. I'm just recalling some of the information, it was just included in the state's CAFER, I read last month, probably more times than you'd care to know, trying to get the audit finalized on it. It's interesting, statewide, most of the companies that are included in the top 10 in the state are not manufacturing. Most of them are service or something else, but not manufacturing. John Derr and, you know, John Derr and a few of the other majors, you know, that are there as well, but it's primarily some of the service types. Insurance, insurance is big also in Iowa, which is good, we want to keep that.
I actually had a, I hope it was a quick question. With regard to calling for services, is that with regard to competitive bidding, is it with regard to documenting the reasons for choosing one over another? I appreciate the concerns of legal policy and it makes a lot of sense to me. And just, to what degree and how does it affect it?
I would love to ask that, I think.
That kind of came out a couple of years ago when we were on the audit and it really has to do with all those things you mentioned. A policy that just says, okay, at what level of spending do we want to allow, say, your finance director to make the decision that you're going to go ahead with that contract or, and at what level do you want to take competitive quotes and at what level do you want to competitively bid those services? That's really what that's about, so that you're not, you don't want to unfairly, you know, you've got to be watchful for related party transactions and things like that.
And simply, our past practice of $25,000 or less is not adequate.
Well, it's adequate, but your policy, that's really covering goods that you purchase, not services.
So services would be?
Engineering.
Engineering services, everything, tree removal services, whatever services that you, and it's, you know, it's a recommendation to sort of beef up your policies to cover some of those.
Are there any best practice policies you'd recommend or are they generally all over the board as long as it's stated?
I think that GFOA has some best practices, but they're very broad and actually get a whole lot, you're going to have to take a look, really what you, you know, if you, I guess one way to look at this is if you're to sit down and look at your expenses for the year, take a look at it and say, okay, where, you know, how do they fall demographically and what types of things there are, you're going to have to really do that before you can kind of own in on what you need. The only thing I'd add to Marlowe's comment is the Code of Iowa in Chapter 26 deals with contracting for public improvements and there's some specific thresholds with that. For cities and counties, there are really, there are no statutory, the Code of Iowa is silent as far as those things and that's why we're looking, you want to get those built in for your own city. And, you know, it's, a lot of times it's more for your own protection than anything else and, you know, if you're following your policy, that's a good thing. One thing I will caution you on, there are attorneys in this state, and I just said attorneys, you shouldn't be there. There are attorneys in the state that make a living with people making policies that they don't follow. So one of the things you want to make sure that you do is if you do, as you go through, and I certainly don't mean to insult you at all, please don't, I was trying to be a little bit funny, but come on for a moment. Be careful because if you make the policy, even though you're well-intended, make it too strict that you can't follow it, then you're just asking for problems with vendors. So you need to, it's got to be balanced and it's got to be, you know, and the other thing that you want to do is you want to make sure that it's not so complicated, that it takes so much staff time, that it drags your costs up. And I think that's, you know, that's the key that I've seen. I've seen some policies that when you read them and say, wow, this is really comprehensive and good, that you look at and say, how do they do this? You got to take three bids for paper flips. Okay, no, that doesn't make any sense. That's just a silly example, but you got to be careful so you don't get into that.
And Art, we're already addressing that and plan to have something with the council by March?
Yeah, Kim Van Nordstrom, our new purchasing officer, has been working up a policy, she and I met a couple of times to get the basics of the policies in and we've set some direction and some guidelines. And she's come up with some very good drafts that she's now circulating among department heads for comments. I think most of the stuff as it relates to goods is going to be pretty straightforward and actually create a few more efficiencies than we have now, make life easier and keep it documented. We're still struggling with the issue of how do you go out and define services and how do you determine why I'm going to pick professional A over professional B in a certain range of things. I, as an executive, I feel like we need to have some sort of policy that allows us to feel comfortable in all the decisions that we make and we can say that this decision was well-founded. The problem becomes getting that, if it does get put into a policy, getting it put in the right way and making it possible for our operating departments to operate within the policy. Now, that's where it's going to take a little longer. Our intention is to get a set of policies and procedures complying or to addressing the audit point that was raised to the mayor by the end of February, review it with the mayor and then have something to counsel, to observe, perhaps act on in March. And in today's staff meeting, we have the first discussions on that, so it is moving along.
It is interesting, engineering, water treatment plants, some engineering firms have specialties in that area, so it will be interesting.
I think what it really gets down to is basically having a protocol for explaining our decisions. And I think what I find, it's somewhat ironic because we've used the state auditors for, you know, 20 years or so, and I don't know that we've, I've never put the audit out to bid. I say that because I'm on the finance committee for the school district and last week, we put that one out to bid. I have plenty of reasons and I think we make the right decision by engaging them each year, but if somebody said to me, tell me why you've done me instead of ABC CPA firm, I don't know that I'd have the answer without sitting down and writing it all out. So, you know, it's a matter of coming up with something that does, that allows us to continue to do our jobs well, but also allow...
us to continue to do our jobs well, but also allows us to be able to, to answer that question rather quickly of why them versus them. And I think that, and when we have that lined out, I think it makes life easier for not only everybody that works here, but any other people in the community that wanna know how and why we do the things we do.
And I think, well, that policy to you, the later than March, probably?
Yeah, I mean, it was, uh, we're, I guess the, the thing that I wanted to make, uh, make clear in all of this is that when the recommendation came to us, that we were gonna start to act on it right away, that, uh, we've got some new people in place, anxious to put something together, and we are moving on it. Uh, we won't, as alluded to earlier, we, we won't do anything rash, so we'll, we may take longer to do it right than to rush something through and then talk about amendments later.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity, and, uh, again, I wanna congratulate you on, uh, your excellence for the year. Um, any other questions?
Further, gratitude to Arts Department for doing a great job, your end of your office. Okay, um, on the consent agenda, are there any specific questions, concerns, or comments? How about public hearings? I think this is a good indication, uh, this next four years. How about resolutions?
I got a question on, uh, six, six D and E unless somebody else has something before. Okay. On, um, six D, the, just for clarification purposes, is that going to be fifty new parking spaces in addition to the twenty, or the twenty is going to turn into fifty? And then question number two is with additional parking in the back, um, I, I know last year there was a concern about, uh, maybe some lights in, in the walkways. Has that been addressed, and if not, will it be?
The twenty will turn into fifty, so a net thirty increase.
Okay, thank you.
I was not aware of a lighting concern. We were planning to look at electrical for future needs such as, uh, flea market, whatever would happen in the parking lot. We could certainly look at lighting. Is that in the passageway or in the parking lot itself?
Yeah, I thought someone, and maybe it wasn't dressed, but I could've sworn somebody was here last year, so there weren't, there wasn't enough lighting in the, in the passageway. Maybe I dreamed it, I, but I thought that that was a, a topic last year.
We can take a look at it.
Okay.
I mean, if it takes just as simple as a additional light bulb or such, it'd probably be included in the document.
Okay, thank you.
Been asking. No, I was just gonna say, if you just take a look at and see, uh, you know, obviously the key to getting people to park back there is to feel safe.
Okay. Just to clarify, there's fifty, there's a temporary lot with twenty spaces, we're gonna expand it to the fifty, but that's combined with the seventy that were from the previously constructed lots. There's, there's seventy.
So seventy plus fifty new ones, excuse me, thirty new ones.
Well, seventy plus the twenty that are temporary, that go away, and then seventy plus fifty total, a hundred twenty stalls.
Thank you.
Okay, on that, do we have a, a, a master plan or an idea of what we envision in that area with how the parking and, you know, potential, uh, improvements to buying street itself, not the street, but perhaps some, some housing? Do we have, just maybe encourage us to have an idea, just so that when we, uh, I appreciate we need parking, but I think we also have to look at, how does it all fit in with the whole, should there be more residential, should it be, just so we don't get in a situation where we have a lot of parking lot on a main entrance there?
I, I don't think we have a, bear in mind that that entire parking lot is, you know, floodplain.
Yeah, that's true.
You cannot have first floor ground level occupied space. So, if you're gonna build residential for commercial or, in fact, you gotta be on the second floor of the occupied space, so.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
That's one of the reasons a lot of those homes deteriorate up there, because you cannot, south of you, you just, you can't get financing because you're in the floodway, you're also legal non-conform, you're side-sized, you're also in a commercial zone district. So, most of those are rentals, when they sell, they sell on a contract for E, because you can't get financing, so it's why you tend to see a lot of those properties start to be capable of being up there.
Um, okay, on E, the, um, the write-up, it talks about, um, doing interior plumbing if required, um, so I wasn't clear if the bid included potential interior plumbing problems, or would that manifest itself in a change order after the fact?
It does not include plumbing work, and we could either do it as a change order or bid it out separate to another contract.
And that, and that decision will be made depending on what is required and the cost?
Once we get it off and see what's underneath.
Right, okay.
Anything else on the resolutions?
Question on, uh, six F for, for Mr. Gross, and that is, uh, respect to enterprise, um, my understanding was that, um, that, that piece of, uh, legislation reverting enterprise zones was due to sunset in, in twenty fifteen, like in, in June of next year. Am I misreading that, or, and do you, do you have any more of a, of a read on that?
My guess is they're going to amend it and extend it.
Okay. Do you know of anything that's been put on the legislative calendar to do that, or?
No, I do know that the economic authority is, is at ready, looking at it, and there are some recommendations coming forth.
Okay. And, uh, 'cause enterprise zones, uh, impact, uh, commercial entities, all right? I've been talking, talking about what, what we can do to incentivize, uh, residential improvement, so, so I was going to take my own personal field trip to Des Moines and talk to folks in the Economic Development Authority, talk about chapter four oh four type revitalization zones, because that can't be done under enterprise zone legislation. Okay, thank you very much.
The one thing that I hear right now, enterprise zone, the way they established it, you, there's six criteria, you've got to meet two of those six criteria. Um, so you're creating districts where these are eligible. Um, then the legislation requires us to create an enterprise zone commission. Um, the way it was drafted is, is that it, it created a, essentially an administrative system that probably isn't necessary. The likely thing that they're probably gonna do is eliminate the districts. Say, you know, it, it will make it available citywide for specific type of projects. That's my, my lead.
Okay. And, and with regard to, to this particular, uh, action here, uh, for, for this apartment complex, my, when I looked at the, the assessed value, it was about, uh, a million and a half dollars on, on the, on the land and, and the structures, but the acquisition value was about two point five million? Am I misreading that somehow, or?
I don't know those numbers.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question off agenda, and I don't know, Larry, Greg, and maybe neither one of you. The bridge on twenty-fourth, the lights that go on the actual bridge, the small lighting, half of it's on, half of it's not, some of it's loose and kinda hanging, is that the state, is that Iowa West Foundation, who's, who's gonna maintain that?
Well, it's, we're considering the slides, but we convinced the I V O T to replace them because they never worked on day one, so they're proposing to replace them to a standard that we, with the help of Iowa West has, have developed. So, they're proposing to put that in one of their interstate project lettings. They haven't identified which one yet, but at some point, hopefully in the near future, they'll be rebuilding those lights of a product that we think's gonna be service better by their service.
Since it's just decorative lighting, I mean, that's all it is, is just the decorative lighting that I'm talking about, can we just go ahead and turn that part off? Because it, it just kinda looks slipshod, you know, some of it's hanging, some of it's lit, some of it's not. I'd rather see it turned off than have it look like that when people are coming into the city, so.
And we do that.
That'd be great.
I'd oughta be a good reminder to the D O T that they're still.
Yes, but people, most people aren't holding the D O T accountable, or the best accountable for not looking good, so.
I, I noticed on the interstate, the, the new roadways that they've just built that aren't being used are better lit than the actual town.
Well, yeah, that is true.
By far, by far.
That is true.
In, are you?
Yeah, that's all I.
Okay. In that vein, can we take a look at, uh, two and three hundred blocks of West Broadway? I, I assume when the weather gets nicer, it's not certainly an emergency, a lot of the uplighting of trees, I think, has just not been working for a while.
I saw, uh, the parks guys were out there the last two days, readjusting those.
Really? Okay. Well, never mind.
See how much these guys are, they, they anticipate.
You anticipate the question. Do you have flutter? Thank you, I'm glad to hear that.
Anything else? I had gotten a call from the chairman of the county, one of the supervisors, asking if we would reconsider the alley vacation, asking to, to bring it up to see what the council's desire was, dicted, I mean, driver's rule is ordered, is one of the descending votes, have to bring it back up. Is one. Is this what we have a new council? I saw, yeah.
Well, and Tom had asked me, do you wanna, do you want one of the, because I was willing to bring it back to the table, and, or do you wanna start from the beginning? And they said, well, just start over. I guess now, you know, the story's come out, out about what they're gonna do with, you know, the building over in their parking lot that's too full, and, you know, we've asked them several times, what is it you wanna do here, and you tell us, and they don't know what they're gonna do. If they'll just kinda let us know, what is, what can we expect to see if we were to make a lot? I mean, again, we don't wanna see all the downtown, not agreed.
I asked the chairman if he'd tell us to move the veterans facility there, and he said absolutely not, that it was one, um, individual, county supervisor who brought that idea forward without the consent of the rest of the, but I don't know.
Okay, so their intent is not to put the new VA building in the lot next to the year competition.
That's one county supervisor telling me, that one county supervisor said that, you know, the county supervisor. So, I don't know, uh, the chairman can get an answer, and the short answer is it's gonna be nonprofit, uh, non-taxpaying. How they came to us about six months ago and said they needed additional parking on those days when they were seating juries to adequately service the amount of people that needed a park, I personally went over and checked with Kent, who, who is the jury.
Court administrator.
Court administrator, asking what the busy day was, went to their parking lot, which is a block away. Uh, there were ninety-two vacant parking spaces on the busiest day, so I don't see a huge influx, but, you know, I think that Locust Street and Two Plus and I voted to go ahead and acquiesce to their request.
The one, the problem was is that they, if they were gonna make it into parking, it was to be parking for their employees, public wouldn't be able to use that lot. And again, you know, you build a parking lot with taxpayer dollars, they already are having to walk quite a ways to get there, and, you know, we've pretty much determined that lot doesn't seem like it's very full very often, so I have to wonder if it's because they're gonna take out some of that space with the VA building and they need a lot.
One of the legitimate, um, uh, potential uses that I've heard, just 'cause I deal with the, the senior center on a couple of issues, is that they need to expand the senior center where it's accessible, a lot of use, they wanna broaden the footprint of that building, which will take more parking. By city code, they need it down way anytime you want to, but they need a certain number of parking spaces per square foot.
Yeah.
And the overflow of what they're gonna lose, they're talking about leasing to the senior centers, or, what the senior center is gonna lose, they're talking about leasing from the county.
Yeah, they aren't efficient. That would be one solution.
I, I, I went back through my, uh, city council papers, and I looked, actually, this is the second time I've asked just to reconsider it. Uh, I think the first time looks like June fifth of twenty twelve. I'm concerned about parking, I think it's more of a, quite frankly, a blocking problem than a parking, having tried a fair number of jury trials, Monday is, is, they don't have trials on Monday, there's a lot of traffic court, magistrates.
I think I counted ten o'clock on a Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday would be when the juries, jury's called nine, ten, before the pools are called, and, yeah, I have never seen it full, and members of the public, uh, rule will, uh, be ticketed and/or towed, I've seen both happen, so. Um, and it is, once you get off the South Expressway, it's the entrance to downtown, and to have the center of the airport be all a parking lot, that, like you say, Mr. Mayor doesn't pay taxes and looks like more parking, that just doesn't make sense to me. I need to say.
But the end goal is that they have acquired the property, it is vacant, they're only asking for the alley to be vacated, so, you know, the alley doesn't pay taxes now, will pay taxes then, I don't know.
No, I would certainly reconsider it, um, because it is just an alley, but if they would share with us, you know, if they have an intent.
Oh, I see what you're talking.
Intended use, if they could just share that with us so that we know, if it's all gonna be parking, because I, when Melvin brought it back the second time, or sent the letter the second time, and one of the things we talked about is if you have to do this, would you at least agree to some landscaping and things that would screen some of the cars, make it, you know, a welcoming site as you're coming across the South Expressway, so, you know, soften it up, and we could get anything back on that. So, I mean, I, I'm certainly open to considering that, if they would consider letting us know what they're gonna do and what they'd be willing to do to make it a.
I'll make sure someone's here.
That'd be great.
All right, we'll get that on the agenda next time. Now, I handed out, and I don't know if I gave to you, and, so, I don't know if you'd hand that over, um, but America Partnership LLC is the entity that we, we're dealing with at the end of December in regards to rehab of the, what we've called the spine, the Plaza Shops of the Mid-America Center. Um, in an earlier memory animal of understanding, they had come to the city requesting three point six million dollars to be repaid over five years, um, and the objection of the council to that time is historically we have not taken money from a particular, not from outside a particular project. So, if someone had come to us asking for TIF assistance, we'd always look at the amount of property taxes that individual, um, partial generated, and, and never given them back more than they had generated. This request certainly was, was much more, three point six five times the amount of property tax it generated, and so the council, um, said they weren't interested in that particular, um, proposal. They didn't shut the door, they asked us to go back and talk with the developer, and there have been numerous conversations that, um, actually went into early this afternoon. That was yesterday's proposal. Um, I, I talked to them this morning, and I said, I really didn't think I could sell that proposal, I thought that, that we were done. I highlighted the, what I thought were the main issues in that proposal, so that you didn't have to wade through them. And I'll just go through those now, um, so that you understand what I highlighted. On the fifth bullet point down, it talks about an Iowa West contribution in two thousand fifteen, and half of the lease payment, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That number is incumbent in the, the amount above. Um, it is taxes due for fourteen, but won't be paid until fifteen, and Arts down here is fourteen.
I mean, these are.
Sorry.
Move to the back row, Tom.
So, I have any time you want, Art, but, so, um, I, I'm. So, I'll have any time you want, Art, but, so, I, I'm almost a hundred percent confident that money's not available, which is why I highlighted it. I had mentioned that I did some analysis, and I think the council in the past has done a TIF that's maybe ten years in duration. The difference with this particular situation is there is a TIF that exists that only has five years remaining on it. I asked Don, can we recreate the TIF to make it a ten-year TIF? And Don said, we certainly have the potential to do that, but what happens is we need to bring the value of everything up to today's value. So, five years ago, when we set that TIF, we had a baseline that we're capturing now. If we change it, we establish a new baseline, and any incremental increase is a loss, and so, we're starting at a new baseline. So, um, I did some rough math in my mind, because the question kept saying, what do you think you could agree to? In a ten-year TIF, at eighty-seven percent, would generate about two point, and eighty percent, I want to be clear, is not the incremental increase, it's the total taxes collected on that project. So, there's about a two point five million dollar value today, two point two, I'm not sure, Art, do you know, remember?
It's two-six.
Two-six. Yeah, and you can jump in too, anytime you want, because.
Go ahead.
Doing this on the fly, normally we don't do this, but the two of you, why don't you sit side by side and make a battle away? And this is the developer also, so, because, like I say, we were talking right up until two o'clock this afternoon, and so I don't want to misspeak and say something that wasn't intended, so I asked him to be here to, to help go through that. I thought two point one was maybe doable, I thought the interest rate was too high, they came back, counted at two point three, hoped to capture that six hundred and sixty-five thousand, but I don't know is there, is an additional incentive, they talked about a pad site. I told them I did not think that the council was accepting of taking the primary parking lot and converting it to a restaurant, and that we would like to see other development there. The developer identified a space that's adjacent to Bass Pro, that's vacant, but I think is leased to Bass Pro. And they thought that they could get a tenant there with a ground lease, and I, a little fuzzy on where we are in the ground lease, if that's still potential revenue for the city, or on the reduced funding, if that's no longer in the equation.
Well, with the reduced funding there, what we had proposed was, we have a relationship with Bass Pro, and it sounds like the city has made attempts to reach out to Bass Pro for different reasons. To our knowledge, that piece is not being used in their current lease, and it's got great interstate frontage and visibility, so in lieu of reducing the ask, the incentive, we'd like the opportunity to approach Bass Pro about releasing that piece off of their lease, and leasing it from the city, the city I believe is the owner, for a dollar, and then realizing whatever increase would be there. But that would be on our shoulders to approach Bass Pro, get them to agree to release it out of their lease. We're not saying we can make that happen, we just have a, a good relationship with Bass Pro, we'd like the opportunity to try and make that happen.
Did I ask them to speak with you to see if you had a question or concerns in matter? So, um.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, I would.
Out.
That's out.
Now, did you consider, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on this point.
I'll jump in at the time on this.
If Bass Pro were to consider releasing that back to the city, and there needs to be some kind of, no matter what we do, or if we do anything, there needs to be a caveat in there, then if they expect their rent to go down, because their rent's based on a percentage, we're not going to take that, that loss to rent it back to you for a dollar. So, you know, I, I wouldn't be in favor of that, because the money we're already bringing in, I'm not going to reduce that number by removing it from their lease, so.
Right. We, and we told the mayor, I told the mayor this afternoon, if Bass Pro would expect any compensation, they'll have to come to the developer.
Okay.
So, we've talked about the ground lease. This came back early this morning, and the city's incentive package was being reimbursed by the developer over three years instead of five. I told them that would not be acceptable, so we're back to five. There was talk about additional sales tax collections, and I don't think this was intent to mislead us, I think it was a calculation of the seven cent sales tax on a restaurant operation, and the developer not realizing that we only recover three-quarters of one cent of the second cents, and so, do not look at that and think we're going to get two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty in the city in sales tax, because that's not going to be the case. So, the, the updated proposal, and again, you know, typically, we look at the incremental tax increase to pay for the project, but this is eighty-seven percent of the taxes that the project would generate over ten years, based on a five-year, um, five million minimum assessment, and then in the next five years, is six million minimum assessment. The project itself would generate by my estimation, I only say that because our, I looked at it and it confirmed with me about two point four one six million, of which we give back to the developer, two point one million. And it's a difficult project to develop, we talked about it in the council meeting last time, but really, for the developer to get a net operating income that on a cash basis appraisal would generate a value enough to cover their costs and return them, or return if they were to sell it, I think it's about a twelve million build-out cost potentially, now that maybe not as much, but in an eight million dollar cash value from an appraisal basis, so there's about a four million gap that they are trying to fill. But again, I know the council had a comfort level of giving money from outside the project to the developer. This, in my mind, keeps it in the project, albeit not all TIF money.
Right. And what, and Mayor, just to pan a little bit on what you just said, I think what we'd like to do is obviously, you know, we talked a little bit about the Bass Pro pad, you know, in our discussions and relationship with Chatters and a lot of these, what I would call, you know, high-volume sit-down restaurants, having an interstate location is just key. I mean, it really is key to securing a restaurant of that nature. So, we'd, we'd like the opportunity, if we're going to be talking to these people, to have a site in mind where we think we could facilitate a deal for them. But then obviously, you know, the crucial elements that we believe are the pylon signage, redoing the facade and the storefront system on what I would call kind of the southern building, so it faces Bass Pro. We can agree to take the restaurant out of the parking lot, and then we'll reduce and scale back our plan slightly, so that the ask for the incentive is reduced accordingly as well. So, I believe what we, what I discussed with Mayor Walsh this afternoon was, the city would contribute two point one million, paid over five years, with a six percent interest rate, and Iowa West, we would then take on the responsibility of approaching Iowa West to forego their two thousand and fourteen lease payment, which would be directed to the developer, I believe that's a million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then we'd like the opportunity, if there is a two thousand and fifteen payment, and that's still up in the air, to have an opportunity to receive that payment, which is six hundred and sixty-five thousand, if it's found that, that is fact, still to be paid. That's an unknown.
And Art, can I just blow up the shed on that?
Yeah, we, at this point, from, from July first of two thousand and fourteen through December thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen, I anticipate Iowa West will receive about two point three to two point four million dollars from, from that TIF district. That's basically a year. All of, all of the TIF funds that would be generated in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, and then the first half of two thousand and sixteen. After December thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen, they're not eligible to receive any more funds according to the development agreement. So, what we're really talking about is, is for that, is one and a half fiscal years of that, of receipts.
And then that, so, we just thought from a perspective of the city discussing with Iowa West, that we'd be happy to take the lead with those discussions with Pete and the Iowa West group, but the incentive would essentially be two-one from the city, and about two-two from Iowa West, but we would tie the six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar payment in two thousand and fifteen from Iowa West to a milestone that's agreed upon. If that makes sense.
So, again, to make it clear, the county, because of the short duration of the, of the TIF district, all my maths predicated on a fantasy world, that you could get a ten-year TIF district, so we would, in essence, be prepaying five years, in the first five years. But my rationale is, we have done ten-year TIF districts for projects, and I think that were not the fact that it already established and only has five years left, we would be considering the ten-year TIF district. And so, that's my rationale for getting to the two point one million, and again, it's not a true TIF district, because the incremental difference, I think, is about a hundred and fifty thousand, and all my calculations are based on the total property tax revenue that's generated off that property, which again, in ten years would be two point four million, so you're giving away about eighty-seven percent of that.
Giving away what percent?
Eighty-seven.
But they took the reduction up to the city, so we're clear, from where we started, we started a five point five million dollar ask, which approximately a million and six of that was coming from Iowa West, so it was a city, a city contribution of about three-nine, we've agreed to reduce that to two-one. It's a pretty drastic reduction, and, and we really have a one-time funding source with Iowa West, and we'll need their board approval in order to do that, but the preliminary discussions have been very positive.
So, Mayor, what would that leave in that TIF district? So, if, if you agreed to, if we were to agree to something like this, and then another project comes down the line next year, and it's a really good one, is there anything left in that district to work with?
There is. I haven't done the math, and I know you sent me a pro forma on how much taxable that would generate, and, and I hadn't calculated what two point one million over five years was, so it's probably in the neighborhood of seven hundred thousand.
Uh, the two, two point one, um, at a six percent interest rate, would be an annual payment of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
So.
Times five.
And is there what, a million and six, some total tax revenue in that district?
In that specific district, Mayor, I believe it was a million and six and one and seven. And then the second district brought in, I believe right around two million.
The second. Second. When you talk second district.
That's the casino now.
And that's restricted as to its use, is it not?
Yeah.
It's, we're going to be limited terms.
Towards Iowa West, I'm going to be. And what they're saying, if there's two-year TIF districts there, we did that agreement in conjunction with funding the Mid-America Center. At the time, we knew that, that Harris was going to do some approvals of their property, so we made two separate TIF districts. And the Mid-America Center is not in a casino TIF district, but they sent back to that. So, I don't know if that's something that, it's certainly a significant reduction, and, you know, the developers ask. Personally, don't know if we're going to get any other developer that's going to come in and ask for less. They're a proven entity that has done those things, but, and I give you all that with a caveat, that was a two o'clock discussion, and we haven't flushed out the numbers yet, we probably need to do that, and have some additional conversations with Dick in regards to what his thoughts are on Bass Pro, what hurts lots our own Bass Pro, Iowa West, and all that, but if that sounds interesting, we'll do that. If, if you're just not interested, we won't. It's not an easy fix, as you know.
I, first, oh, the first round, I voted against it. I am strongly encouraged by this, I think the developers sitting down back, and it's certainly a very good phase, and I'm, well, I'm very encouraged by the process. I think we've got to find a way to get that area down there to have more life, because in a couple of years, you know, the taxpayers are going to be on the hook for, as they are now for most of any loss at the MAC, they'll be on the hook for quite a bit more. And not only do we need more places for people to go and show, I think we need to find a way to, to plug the hole of losses there, not that the MAC would ever perhaps make a lot of money, but hopefully it will stop losing a lot of money. And, and I know the, the current managers of it have stemmed the loss quite a bit, I pointed that out, and I think they're doing a good job. But anything we could do, so, I, I very much, I hadn't thought about that, Mr. Mayor, and I thought, that's a, that's a really interesting way to look at it, and.
But it just was complicated by the fact that one five years left in the TIF.
I had thought about that, and you know, that makes me very receptive to this, and so, if you're looking, I know, I think it was three-two, so, I'm very, I'm very encouraged by that.
It was, but, but one of the two looked over here, so.
Oh.
We reshuffled the deck, we're all good decks.
Well, that's true. Well, that, fair enough. So, well, one of the three is at least very, I, as much as I, I don't like to use that high of a percentage, you make a good point about the five versus ten, and quite frankly, if we don't spend money there to make money, we're going to lose a lot more and have less to show for it, and I, I give our time justifying that.
So, the information, because I was, I was one of the three that.
Yeah, I wanted to flush out some of this stuff, so, now, like I say, we've kind of been on the go and exchanged daily phone calls back and forth, so.
So, you'll have some more information to give us, so that we can adjust it?
Yeah, if, if it's, if it's just something you say, you know, I'm out, then we don't want to waste anybody else's time, but, but I don't, I don't know that I can give you hope of a more attractive alternatives.
Well, I guess if it helps you, I'm not as out as I was before. I mean, I'd like to maybe see someone.
Less out, she's less out.
Wow. How's that for clarity?
I think that's what my ex-wife said the day.
It'd be nice to see the new packaging together, and, and, you know, get all the numbers on, on one thing, and, and get some feedback from Art, and get some feedback from Dick on it. I guess this is what I would say, is that right now, that buil-, building is not costing our taxpayers anything.
Yeah.
A bank owns it, it's not costing our taxpayers anything. If restaurants drove business and would make a difference at the MAC, that would have already happened. We have restaurants, we have several restaurants down there that have not done well. Adding more restaurants, I'm not convinced is going to turn anything around for the MAC or anybody else. What I do think is that if in fact HDR and DOT move into that space, that's going to create a lot of the traffic for the existing restaurants, that's going to cause traffic. I do believe that if Harris is able to do some of the things that they'd like to do on their property, if, if the dock track were to be removed, that could change what is going on in that area. I don't believe anything I've seen about this project would change anything about the viability of that area or of the MAC in any way. I think this building will take care of itself once some of these other things happen, and I say be patient, you know, I'm, I'm not willing to rush into this, knowing good and well that it could take care of itself in, in good time, and right now, it's costing the taxpayers nothing. isn't something we have to address as a big loss for the city. It definitely doesn't fit what I would consider to be an area that's in blight and we need to take care of it because it's blighted, or an injury to our city that looks bad. So I'm still not very much in favor of the project at this point, but I will keep an open mind, and I will look at the new numbers and staff recommendations.
And one of the keys to economic development is just creating momentum. Hopefully, that if Harrah's does the casino, and with the dog track issue resolved, and and we, you know, there are some exciting potential things going on down in that area. I hear what you're saying, maybe all those things just make that space more viable. I know, not from talking to the developer, but from talking to a friend of Ketchell's, that they're ready to just shut the door and move to the Cox barbecue building. And, and so that goes dark, and then inertia goes the wrong way.
Well, the thing about that building is, is that we can, we have to keep in mind that there are long-term leases for non-commercial type businesses there that aren't just going to go away. So, you know, yeah, I, I know famous days, this discussed that. I can say I was down there the other night, they were packed, but that's not, not there all the time, and I imagine there are issues. But the whole thing about it is, is that you've got one whole half of that building that's got long-term leases, it's not going to be retail, it's not going to be restaurant. Those issues aren't going to change. We can throw this money at it, and what you're going to get out of it near as I can tell is a couple of restaurants. I, I just don't, I guess I just don't see how we're going to see a big enough increase in the property, the value of the property. I mean, yeah, they've agreed to a minimum of assessment of, and I'm still not clear, is it 6 million?
Five million through 19, and then, and then 6 million. But the thought being is that when that gets leased up and the assessor looks at it, it very likely could have 8 million dollars.
Yeah, we, we think with the activity in the building stabilized, it's, it's really got a strong likelihood of it being closer to 8 million.
But they're willing to.
We're only agreeing with minimum assessment, so, yeah. And I think, I think, that's why, I mean, the comments are well-received. I think what we find in the, you know, in the development world is momentum creates more momentum, and activities spur more activity. We've seen it all across, you know, any project you can think of, whether it be in Omaha or Kansas City, or where, where we operate. And if that building fills up, and more foot traffic comes down there, whether it be restaurants, like, dislike, what have you, it brings more people to the area. And that area, in our opinion, is, I would call it sleep. I mean, there's nobody down there ever, and we've got to turn that around, we've got to create momentum, we've got to bring people down there. If that means HDR with 30 employees, that's 30 employees that weren't down there before.
I agree.
And that's 30 employees that are going to go out to eat, and they're going to go to the restaurants, and that's what we've got to do, because that, that activity could spur other activity, which could bring other developers to the district, and that's what needs to happen.
I agree.
And the MAC needs to build by itself.
But again, we've invested a lot of money down there, and a lot of other people went in and put restaurants in with that exact intent, and it didn't change much. I think that it's going to take something more than two restaurants to change the face of what's going on down there.
But the spine itself, 50% of it has never been built out. It's never been constructed. I mean, it's in shell condition, it's got barren floors, it's no HVAC, so I mean, 50% of the building has never, ever even been occupied.
And how much of that 50% is going to be in office space, and how much is going to be in things that's going to drive a lot of that traffic?
Well, the southern building that we would redo storefronts on, we didn't intend all of that to be retail. The northern portion, where we would potentially relocate tenants, reposition tenants, could be a combination of retail and office. But our intent is, we want to fill up that building, we want to generate the foot traffic, because we really want to spread the momentum for the district.
What's the overall percentage down there on the, on the spine, assuming that it was all built out, and you've got a mix of retail and office space? What is the percentage of retail versus office space? Is it 50/50?
I would say it's probably 75% retail and 75% office.
75% retail?
Today, or what we envisioned?
No, what you envisioned.
Yeah, we would envision probably closer to 75% retail.
Even with the new tenants coming in and lease assigned, the DOT and the HDR?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the existing leases there today don't have more than maybe a couple of years of term. Um, I know the social security has maybe two years left, they've indicated to us they're considering leaving. So I think there's some existing tenants there on the office side that may not stay. So.
Didn't you guys say at our meeting that they had like 10 years left on that lease?
I don't think so.
I thought everybody in there was, was in there for a while. Seven to 10 years, at our meeting. Yeah, that, and the new tenant you guys just put in there.
We, we have a relationship with social, social security, and we've talked to them about extending and staying, but they said based on the changes that they're occurring, they're, they're not interested in signing a long-term lease, and they actually evaluate all.
GSA and, and recruiters were planning on staying long-term, but not social security, is, is that, is that the deal, or?
Yes, yeah. And I, Matt Pennington, who's not here today, has really been the direct contact with those folks, so.
Well, and like I say, I will definitely stay open to it. I'm anxious to talk with staff and see what their opinion of, of the new numbers are, and I, I'm not completely against it, I just, it's not probably something that I think is going to long-term make a, a lot of difference, not be an accessory, but I really don't. I think it's going to take bigger projects to make any real difference, don't I?
Well, speaking of those bigger projects, I, I know that you're in somewhat, you know, you, you want to get this done anytime. Yesterday would be, would be great. Having said that, you know, we, we have this other issues with, with dog track, and, and we won't have a good sense of how likely it, it is that, that they may have the flexibility of developing that property until we get to further down the legislative session, and the first funnel occurs on the 21st of February. What sort of wiggle room do, do we have in order to start to develop that comfort level on what the possibilities are for further development in that area?
Well, I think there's a tremendous opportunity. I mean, you're at the crossroads of two major interstate systems, you've got an unbelievable amount of traffic, visitor traffic, a position right between Council of West and Omaha. I mean, location-wise, it's incredible. But there's some challenges with the district, there's no doubt about it. I mean, the Mid-America Center is, is, is a challenge. It doesn't generate obviously the traffic and the visitors that was originally intended. So the problem needs to be long-term vision for that building. The horseshoe, the tracks, I didn't realize this until we got to start with this project, that's the largest casino in, in Iowa. I had no idea. Generates over 3.6 million visitors a year. So it's incredible how much traffic it generates down there, but they go into the casino. And we've started to build a relationship with Bo Gidry, to say, how do we bring these people out of the casino? You have all this traffic. I would venture to guess the casino generates probably 10 times as much traffic as Bass Pro. And I think, if you'd asked the general public, they would have no idea. They'd think Bass Pro may generate as many visitors as the casino. It's not even close. So it's how do you pull those people out of the casino? And we've started to establish some marketing strategies with Bo of how they funnel people between casinos over to Harrah's, and how do we, how can we make those vans and buses stop at the spine, drop people off, you know, go to a restaurant, go to a sports bar, watch a game? And those are the type of, of marketing strategies I think we're going to need to implement, because there are so many people coming into the casino, it's, it's really unbelievable.
So what you're saying, what you're saying is, Bo is interested in, in shuffling the people back out of his doors to go to restaurants, and?
Yes, he is. We've had numerous discussions with Bo. Caesars has a program that they'll set up, the specific restaurants, where they'll comp guests, and they found that some of their visitors like to get out of the casino for a period of time. You know, they, they have restaurants internally, so we don't want to kid ourselves that, you know, those are going to be first come, first served. But I think there truly is an opportunity to bring those people out of the casino and market some of the surrounding space. And that's what the challenge down there has been, is you keep them all inside, they're concentrated, and they never, they never really get out of the casino.
Surprised that they haven't worked with Baker Spink and Loop, or maybe they have, and, and Ruby Tuesday's, and the, yeah. So you think they have?
I have no idea. Bo did contact me, and was encouraging on the project.
Yeah, and we've, we've reached out, and we've had numerous meetings with him. You know, he's obviously very interested to see this come together, and.
Casino guys in the back there were going, well, we really want you to pull more people in the area so they go to the casino.
That's why I was surprised that Bo was trying to shuttle, shuttle them to the door.
Well, you know, many, many times the spouse or significant other may not be as much into the gambling portion, but has definitely control over where they go there that day, so there's always a reason to have something for that person to be the target.
Well, maybe someday we'll have a full-service hotel in the area that will attract more conventions and seminars and conferences, and then there'll be an offsite program.
The whole thing's in there.
Then that building will be worth a substantial amount of money, a lot more than what is being bought for as a repo right now, so.
I'm not sure we have time to wait, but I appreciate, I, I think we've got a tough decision.
So, Mayor?
And I think Drew, just to clarify Al's question, I think his actual question is, at what point do you need a commitment from the city council? I know last week I told him, I said, you know, I don't want you to have to keep more option money back in to extend this out, and they said, thanks, we just paid X dollars yesterday, so, so I don't know.
I think barring further investigation of the numbers, we, we would like to know, and step one would be, we have a financial package with the numbers that are agreed, what the milestones are, and what the plan is from there. We'll take the next couple of weeks and put that together and craft it into a revised MOU, but Mayor, I think, you know, your question to the council was, we just want to know, does, does the council believe in this proposal, or do they have the attitude to want to move this forward?
Well, I think the answer is, we want to see more information, and the question back to you is, what is your deadline? Is it in two weeks? Is it in three weeks? Is it in four weeks?
Well, right, right now, we were able to secure an extension of our contract, but it cost us some money with Mutual of Omaha. They know that we're fairly deep into discussions with the city, but we, we've made it very apparent to Mutual that without an incentive package agreeable between us and the city, we can't move forward. So I think we could probably get another extension from Mutual, but at some point, we're going to run out of time with them. I think we're on our third or fourth extension. So we, we need to, you know, get something worked out between us. Understanding, we want more information, we want to understand the numbers and, and what the payback's going to look like.
I understand that, but my, my question was, and I think I flew, it's a regional question, is, yeah, what, do you need to have everything decided in front of the council? In two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, six weeks?
We'd like to have a, a agreed-on memorandum of understanding.
By the next council meeting.
By the next council meeting, two weeks. Thank you.
Kind of bringing that from a certain former banker I worked with, who's a workout specialist, each with one law code, he's very concerned, and let's see some. So, Matt, tell me, is this, have any legs or not?
Hey, hey, understand that you're under pressure. This goes back to the mayor's point on, on momentum. Again, if, if, if Harrah's and the horseshoe are unable to, to develop what's, that property that's currently occupied by that dog track, a, a lot of that momentum disappears for, for the time being, and so that, that has to factor into the calculus, so, so that's kind of where we are with, with our quandary, that we don't know for sure if, if legislature is again going to kill this in committee, or if it's actually going to make it to the floor this year.
Right, right. And I think those are valid concerns. My experience has been, if you get a developer in a district with creative ideas and creative thoughts, it spurs other activity, it always does. Whether that be with the horse track, whether that be with the, with the MAC itself, my assumption is, once we're down and working, that's, that's been part of the problem with this district, nobody's down there, nobody's working on anything, nobody's calling retailers, nobody's bringing people on site tours into the district. That's what we want to change, we want to bring people down there, and then other ideas will present themselves, they always do, whether it be for the MAC, whether it be for the dog track. I think if the dog track could become available, absolutely. I mean, it'd be, it'd be a great site for many various users. Part of our plan is that, that's not contingent on our plan moving forward, though. That's obviously outside of our control, and we can't control it.
You know, the whole, the whole development strategy of that area was flawed from the get-go there. They sold rather than deal with Harlanato, who was a development specialist in Omaha, they chose to deal with Paul Como, who presented himself as, as a developer, and we quickly found out he wasn't. Then the residual land down there, they sold, and probably off a little bit, $2 a square foot, to a wealthy individual who doesn't have any carrying costs, he just paid cash for it, and he's sitting waiting for it to develop, and he's not trying to find people to buy his property, he's hoping they'll come to him. There was, you know, if they sold it at a market rate, whoever bought it, then would have to go out and start trying to find people. He's just not doing that, he's just waiting. Mackey got the same sweetheart deal, if he put in the hotel, which he did, but he, he has pad sites that he's never tried to actively market, I don't think, or if he has, not aggressively. And so it just sits there and languishes. My only concern, honestly, with you guys, is your pro forma talked about selling in five years, I hope you're here longer than five years. I, I hope it's successful for you, I hope, I hope you get enough rents out of it, that you say we want to go further and, and buy Mackey's property and, and make it successful, so.
And I think that's what Bo, we feel very comfortable, because we know and have relationships with a lot of the property on the channel, and, you know, we've had initial discussions, and we just, we know it's very evident that, you know, nobody's paying attention to this, nobody's working on it, it's just sort of there, and with everybody having the mindset, well, we hope it fixes itself.
I just, I'm sure Bo's inclination is that there'll be people down in those restaurants that'll want to go somewhere after they leave the restaurant, that maybe aren't going to go to the casino, but they're in the neighborhood, and whatever's going on, and Bo will come to the casino rather than vice versa.
I think as we look at it as, well, if, if this fails as a going venture, the, the risk of it failing and, and losing money, and as I read the proposal, would not be on the city, it would be on the developer. And so I don't, from that perspective, I don't see it as a situation which, beginning with, with tax incentives and not having a carry risk, which, you know, sometimes happens in this world, doesn't make sense to me, but if they're going to put that kind of resources out and attempt to make the area do something more, I don't see how that would contradict other projects that hopefully I, I do hope do happen, and.
And I had to make it secret in the discussions. I think one of the things that's also killed that area is that we committed all the money to the Iowa West foundation, and we have no incremental money to commit to developers, and so, you know, I told Drew earlier on, it's concerning me, we hamstring ourselves again for another five years if, you know, and I'm less concerned at the 2.1 number than I was at the 3.9 number, and whatever we start with. Anything else? Before, I don't know if you have any questions on the greyhound racing, but Vernon AJ here and, and Sam does. Let's talk Sam.
I have an opening, though.
A whole new protocol today.
Wow.
Simmer, 1321, parent place, I think that's the protocol, right? I have several questions, but you're dealing with a simmer issue with that development down there, as far as the dog track is concerned. My concern is about the, number one, the resolution and so forth.
down there as far as the dog track is concerned. My concern is about the, number one, the resolution and so forth. The first question is, are we, are we not eliminating, if this goes along, are we going to eliminate simulcasting in dogs?
No, that's not proposing the resolution.
But what I get here is, is you're talking about on one hand, stopping dog tracks. On the other hand, you're saying parent mutual gaming is still in existence?
I think it's live versus simulcast, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I got confused by when I read this was, on one hand, you're saying we don't want a dog track.
It's live.
If what you're saying is true, parent mutual will go on along with simulcasting of the horses.
Right.
Right, correct. It's just the live dogs.
But if they kill the dogs, they're the dog track, you're more likely...
Well, we're not going to kill the dogs. We're not going to kill the dogs. Don't get us in trouble.
But I appreciate you ladies have dialogue.
You know, Sam, and I don't know if you've been down there, but she's got a huge facility that is virtually vacant, other than around simulcast windows. There's nobody sitting in the stand.
I've been down there, you know, half a dozen times the past several years and you're right, you can rub a bowling ball through there and I agree, they're probably a better use. My concern is, should, other things is, how does that fit with the negotiations with the dog owners?
Yeah, I think that, and maybe we'll let AJ talk to it if we need to, but my understanding in the conversations with the dog track is, they would keep the simulcast if they are allowed to, if they can get rid of the dog track, keep the simulcast, they're fine with that. If the legislature wants a simulcast to go away too, they're fine with that. They just, it's the subsidizing, you're losing.
Which brings up the next follow-up question with that, is if they allow simulcasting and parent mutual bedding or what would be the other attractions to bring more people there without doing a major overhaul? For instance, parent mutual bet, not parent mutual bedding, but the, I'm trying to think about sports betting, the other issues that can go along with the gambling, you know, so forth. I don't know whether that will... The point is, over the last 20 something years, games came a long ways in the waters under the bridge. I just want to make sure that we have a good idea of what's going to win there, like you guys were talking about there. I would agree, you need more foot traffic down there to make, make an additional gambling restaurants and so forth. I wholeheartedly agree with you. And this goes back a long time ago. Zoning, will that be an issue later on? I don't know.
It's zoned.
It's zoned gambling right now, I think. And more importantly, I think, Councilman White, as probably someone addressed it, are we establishing a bad precedent of saying, well, Bill, how somebody is losing money on our project? That's just my thoughts, you know, from the outside looking in. You know, we're going to say, okay, we're going to do this so you can make more money. That being said, is the city going to be compensated through this process? Before, we didn't have a whole lot to say about the revenues we get from down there. You know, we went from Iowa State, Iowa getting 10%, I don't know what Iowa West gets out in there, County gets a half a percent, we get a half a percent. Does this mean we can open up more negotiations and get more revenue? I don't know, but there's, there's a lot of probably other dialogues that we could have and I appreciate you.
I guess my answer to your question is that we think we can get more revenues out of the deal in the form of property tax dollars if we...
Take on lower state, take on hotels, convert them to a hotel or... I guess I'm, I'm like Mrs. White there. I envisioned that you probably want to bring a hotel there, you know, which would make sense, but same token, hotels not remembering the traffic in there. We're hoping, like you say, to develop in that whole area down there. You're just concerned, I got, that's all.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for AJ or... All right, thank you. So. That was a short...